Okay, good morning. So we're gonna get started with the invocation that will be delivered by Demetrius Bell, pastor at Crossings Community Church, and followed by the pledge of allegiance put on by Paul Kirkpatrick, Asher Sharpless Borges, and David Clinton of Boy Scouts Troop 15. Please stand with us.
It is an honor to join you all today for the first council meeting of 2024. Let us pray. Thank you, Lord, for the opportunity that we have to serve this fine city. Thank you for each member of the City Council, and for Mayor Holt, and for Vice Mayor Carter, and for all the leadership and guidance that is given to Oklahoma City. Lord, we pray for your blessings over this city as we start this new year, and for the continued wisdom and leadership of this team. Lord, it is in your son Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Hello. Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I now call this meeting to order. Item three is office of the mayor. I will make my way down. Okay, good morning. Could I please have Joe Dowdell join me up here? Morning, Joe. Thirty-one years.
Yes, sir.
That's quite a time. So we have a resolution here that I will now have the city clerk read in honor of Joe.
Whereas Joe Dowdell has been a city employee for thirty-one years, and is a unit operations manager for the General Services Department. And whereas Joe Dowdell is the facility maintenance supervisor at several buildings across the city. And whereas Joe Dowdell has extensive experience in his field and is committed to his profession, making himself available whenever needed, which is oftentimes nights, weekends, and holidays. And whereas Joe Dowdell provides excellent customer service and responds promptly when problems arise. And whereas Joe Dowdell responded to flooding on several floors of the James D Couch Building, and began restoration quickly so employees could return to work and perform their duties. And whereas Joe Dowdell is kind, reliable, knowledgeable, flexible, independent, and trustworthy. And whereas this council desires to recognize Joe Dowdell for his dedication, compassion, and commitment to the residents of the City of Oklahoma City. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Joe Dowdell, January 2024, South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
All right, Joe. Being that this is a resolution, we're gonna take it as a vote. I'd like to vote aye. It's always tense at this time. And it passes unanimously. All right, Joe. Joe, I can't thank you enough for all of your service and everything you do, but we'd like to hear some words from you as well.
Well, I'd like to thank my leadership team, John Siska and Paul Bronson. I've worked for General Services thirty-one years. It's a great place to work. I would also like to thank my team, the Downtown Section, for their hard work and dedication. Without them, I would not be standing here. Thank you.
All right, let's hear it for Joe. Okay, so that concludes office of the mayor. Item four is nothing from council on five city manager reports.
Thank you, Mayor, or Vice Mayor. We've got our city ma-- I mean, our sales tax report on this morning. The sales tax, if you notice in the report, it notes it's the December sales tax, and this is the last half October, and the first half of December, I mean, of November, so we're not getting yet into Christmas sales. But we do have a decline in sales tax, and it's a 2.4% decline. If you back up, I think it was back in, on our September check, we had a slight decline. It was just almost even, like it was down about a half percent. So it's something we really wanna monitor really closely. I do caution generally, don't look at just one month and react to that, so we'll continue to monitor this and make sure of where we are. We're still about one point, or about $2.4 million above target for the year, so overall doing well. But we'll continue to monitor this and then let you know as we see changes in the economy. We will have Russell Evans with us, our economist. He'll be with us in the beginning of February for our budget workshop to give us more of an update and a sense for what we can expect in the rest of this year, and then for next year. And that's all that I have.
Thank you. Okay. Item six, Journal of Council Proceedings, we could take with one vote. Got a motion and second. Please cast your votes. And it passes unanimously. Item seven is a request for uncontested continuances.
So we've got several that are listed on the agenda. Item eleven, I'm sorry, 9A B is deferred to the sixteenth. Item nine B, or eleven B is deferred to the sixteenth as well, and then item eleven C is withdrawn. So all of those are listed on the agenda. The other items that we have are on page fifteen, eleven A D one. There are two items, both are stricken. Item B, 225 North Indiana Avenue, the owner has secured. Item E, thirty-three Southeast Fifty-first Street, the owner has secured. Then continuing on page fifteen under eleven A E one, abandoned buildings, both of these are stricken from the agenda. Item A, 225 North Indiana Avenue, and item G, thirty-three Southeast Fifty-first Street. And that's all the items that I have.
Thank you. Okay. Item eight, revocable permits and events. We have none this month. So we will now recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority.
I would like to request executive session on item F one under OCMFA.
Okay. So we've got a motion. I'll take a second. Okay. Not receiving a second, then I think we need to move forward.
Then I'd like to vote separately on item F, please.
James wants to second.
James wants to second that. On F one for executive session.
So you-- On the executive session. He wanted, you wanted to second the executive session.
So F two, not F one. Yeah. Yes. And the item fails five to three. And do you still want me to pull it up for a second vote?
Yes, please.
Do we do that now? Let's go ahead and take that now, please. Need a motion and a second, please? Please cast your vote. And the item passes five to three. Okay. Item A--
We have a presentation.
Presentation for--
Yeah, Alex Fedak is our controller, and Alex is gonna just give us an overview. What we'll do here, we've got three items that are on today regarding financial statements for the council to review and approve. One is the MFA, as Municipal Facilities Authority. One is the PPA, and then under the city. And so with these financial statements, Alex is gonna give an overview of all of these. He'll let us know where they appear on the agenda. We won't review them at every single point in the agenda, but go ahead and review all of those right now. So I'll let Alex do this. Before he starts, I know he's gonna recognize his team too, but a lot of the folks here are with accounting, and I'll let him have them stand later on. But I just wanna express my appreciation to our accounting staff for the work that they do in making sure that we're recording things financially correct, and we're accounting for our finances in the right way. And I just appreciate the work that they do, Alex's leadership, but I know they put a significant amount of time going into year end. I really appreciate their work and just wanna acknowledge them. Alex.
Appreciate it. Alex Fedak, Accounting Services Division. Yeah, and like Craig said, I'm just gonna go over the results of the 2023 audit. I will mention, I'd like to mention or acknowledge our audit firm, Allen, Gibbs &amp; Hulick. We did meet on December twelfth in the Audit Committee to go over these results, and so I'm just gonna summarize some of the results. We received unqualified opinions on all reports, which means clean audit, so that's good news. We remained a low-risk audity, which means the auditors can rely on our controls, and it requires less audit work in our single audit. We prepared twelve audited reports. We follow generally accepted accounting principles. Next slide. We did implement four new standards this year. I'm not gonna get into the details of what those standards are. They didn't have a material impact to our financial statements this year, but they did have a material impact to the amount of work required to go into our financial statements. We're up to about a hundred, a hundred standards now, just to give you an idea. Next slide. I was gonna talk about net position a little bit, and that's assets less liabilities. So for the MFA, net position increased to forty-nine point six million over last year's net position of forty-five point eight million. And part of that was due to increased funding for capital improvement and software licensing. The PPA, overall net position increased one point six million to seventy-four point nine million over last year's net position of seventy-three point three million, and that was primarily due to increased event revenues offset by Fairgrounds' capital asset depreciation. And I will mention that at the beginning of each report, there's a section called the Management Discussion and Analysis. And if you're interested in a more detailed line item year-over-year change in each of these trusts, it's at the beginning of these reports. It's usually about page five or six. It'll give you a more in-depth detail of the changes in that position. Onto the annual comprehensive financial report for the city. The net position numbers I just mentioned will be included in these numbers. The city net position, total net position is 2.9 billion compared to last year's net position of 2.7 billion. Component units, which are some of the various trusts, net position is 2.3 billion compared to last year's net position of 2.1 billion. Right, total overall net position of 5.2 billion. And just a side note, the city has received the GFOA's Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for forty consecutive years. We expect to, on this year's report, get it for the forty-first year. So that's a very big accomplishment as well. Next slide. So we also do a separate report for the audit of the federal and state grant awards, but with the growth in those dollars in the last few years, we've usually brought that to council at a later date. It's not required to be completed until March thirty-first, so you'll see that on a later council date. So again, if we, if I could have Accounting Services stand, I'd like to acknowledge all the hard work that they put in this year, a lot of extra hours as the standards increase. Takes a lot more effort, and I really appreciate all their efforts. So thank you.
Thanks, Alex. Are there any questions? I know there's a lot of information there, and this is one of those things that you don't hear a lot about your accounting department, your division, and they don't like to be out in front, but really do appreciate the great work that they do, the recognition from the GFOA award, but then also having clean audits. And I think it says a lot about the work that they do every single day. So thank you all, and Alex, thanks for your leadership.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So we can take all of OCMFA with one vote. We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. And it passes. Thank you. We will now adjourn OCMFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we can take A and B with one vote as well. We have a motion and a second. Please cast your vote. And it passes. We will now adjourn OCPPA and reconvene as the council, where we are on item nine, the Consent Docket. Is there any council member that would like to discuss or pull anything out for a separate vote?
Yes, Vice Mayor. Item A O, A P, A Q, and A R, actually, N A S, so A O through A S. I would like for, I know this is part of our bike infrastructure improvement plan, but someone to just speak so our community and our residents around the city will at least know and understand what is coming.
Okay.
Similarly, A I, put in that same category.
And also, I wanted to do a separate vote for A F.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, we'll do this in order. We'll start with a separate vote on A F, please.
And before we do this vote, I just wanted to make a quick comment. I understand we are implementing and executing funds. However, one of the entities is Oklahoma City Housing Authority, and therefore I will be voting no on that.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your vote. The item passes seven to one. Okay, now on to A I. Ward six.
Yeah, I was just hoping to hear more from Public Works about this project and kinda what that timeline will look like, so the public has some information.
Sure. Debbie Miller with the Public Works Department. Item A I is for bike lanes on Villa from Northwest Tenth all the way up to Northwest Sixty-second. We are looking at a construction to begin in spring of 2024 and be completed in 2024 for summer. We're gonna also put a four-way stop in at Nineteenth and Villa to help with the traffic.
I know a lot of residents along Villa, at least in my part of Villa, between Tenth and Twenty-third, are very, are very much looking forward to this project. I've heard a lot of frustration and complaints about how fast traffic is on Villa when it really is kinda this like neighborhood street, but it's kind of turned into an arterial connector type. People kinda use it as a, as a cut-through, but it really is kind of in the middle of these two neighborhoods. And there hasn't historically been sidewalks on Villa. I know that's changing in the future, but just slowing people down, I think, will be huge, and making a better connection for people biking north to south along that corridor will be really exciting. So thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, before, I'm so sorry. Do we have an update on any sort of designs, or is that a post-bid moment? I'm just saying that Councilwoman Hammond and I sat with Director Butler, I don't know, about a year ago, and with some other planning staff to review what this was gonna look like, but we haven't received updates. Like, the last I remember, 'cause both Councilwoman Hammond and I, in regards to the bike infrastructure, originally it was just gonna be like tier three, you know, share-o type stuff, but Joe Beth and I kinda pushed on this, and I don't remember receiving an update. Am I wrong, Councilwoman?
Sorry, that could be on me.
You're fine.
I can tell you from Northwest Tenth and Northwest Thirtieth, we're gonna have a tier one facility. And the remaining will end up being share-ros, but we do have a tier one up to Thirtieth.
And, brand-new information to me today, so just wanted to be clear on that. And then sidewalks?
I believe that will be coming as a separate project in the future.
So we have figured out how to accomplish both of these two pieces of infrastructure, at least from Tenth to Thirtieth?
I believe we're working on that, on the sidewalk portion.
Can there be a moment where staff sits with us and kinda walks us through what this is gonna look like?
Of course, I'd be glad to do that.
That is wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Debbie. A O, Ward seven.
I think Ms. Debbie has my update as well.
I do. This is on our first parking-protected bike lane that we're putting in. We had to go through and remove and install some ADA spaces. We removed some old parking, and these items are what came from the Traffic Commission.
Okay. Do we have a timeline for this project as far as the beginning to end?
We're very close to getting this out to bid.
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. At all, we can take, we have a presentation? Almost had us out here. Okay. B I?
Oh, I'm sorry, B J, B J. Chris York, our budget director, is gonna give us a quick presentation on the fiscal year twenty-three Public Safety Sales Tax Report.
All right, thank you, City Manager. Really, just a quick overview. This is, as Mr. Freeman said, the Public Safety Sales Tax Report for fiscal year 2023. The intent of the report is to give council a complete picture of the expenditures from prior year for the tax, and to ensure that we're complying with the journal entry of judgment, and we're spending all those funds on approved projects. I'll just go through a couple of highlights for you here on page one. In the lower right, we have a couple of charts, the first of which is our starting point for the fiscal year. Police started the year at thirty-four point six million dollars, and after revenues and expenditures for the year ended at forty-two point two million dollars. The fire portion started at twenty-seven point six million dollars, and after revenues and expenditure ended the year at thirty-three point three million. So both portions of the fund were able to add to their fund balance. Below that, we have the number of positions that are funded by the Public Safety Sales Tax. Those numbers remain the same at two-hundred-and-twenty police officers and two-hundred-and-two firefighters. The total is higher for fire, though, but those are general fund positions. We were able to add eighteen in fiscal year 2023. Turning to the next page, we zoom in on the police portion of the tax, and I'd note for you on the left column that three projects were completed and three were initiated. Those are there for your reference on the lower portion of that column. And then looking at the pie chart, total expenditures were right at forty-eight point seven million dollars. That's 6.8 million dollars more than the prior year. The top three projects were the same as prior year, and those are gonna be twenty-six million for the two-hundred-and-twenty officers we referenced, eleven million for the wage adjustment. This is a project that allows the Public Safety Sales Tax to help support the general fund in paying for increased police officer salaries and benefits, and then followed by the third category of right at five million dollars for equipment and facility improvements. Turning the page again to look at the fire portion of the fund. There is no activity change on the column for the projects in the right. Their projects are written a little bit more broadly and long-term, so there were no new projects initiated or completed. They're still making progress on the same list. Total expenditures were fifty-three point nine million dollars, which is about 4.8 million greater than last year. And those same top three projects that we saw in police are, again, the same for fire. So two-hundred-and-two additional firefighters at thirty point nine million dollars, our wage adjustment at thirteen million dollars, and equipment and tools at 6.7 million dollars. The next two pages are just background and footnotes for your reference, and then you'll also see an amendment in your packet, or attachment, rather, in your packet. And that is one other requirement of the journal entry of judgment, and that's our city auditor to conduct an audit of the report and all of the activity they did. It is attached, and I'm happy to report that they'd had no material findings and gave us a clean audit. That's all the highlights I have for you.
That's awesome. Thank you, Chris. That's Chris. All right, we can take item nine then. The rest of it with one vote? We have a motion and a second. Please cast your vote. And the item passes. Item ten, the Concurrent Docket. We can take items A through N with one vote. We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. And the item passes. Item eleven, items requiring separate votes. Item A is an ordinance on final hearing. I recommend it for approval. It's a PC 10906 rezoning of 3850 South Prospect. Ward four.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Has anyone signed up to speak?
No.
All right. This is a Uncue located around Grand and I-35, recommended for approval, so with that, it will move for its approval.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. And the item passes. Item B was previously deferred. Item C has been withdrawn, so I'll hand to item D, an ordinance on final hearing, also recommended for approval. PUD 1970 rezoning 3778 South Check Hall Road from PUD 1782 to a planned unit development district-- from PUD 1782 to a planned unit development district of PUD 1970. Ward three.
Vice Mayor, has anybody signed up to speak?
No, ma'am.
All right, well, I'm going to go ahead and move for approval.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. And the item passes. Item E is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval. PUD 1971 rezoning 14924 Southeast 104th Street from RA. Single-family. Ward four.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Has anyone signed up to speak?
No, sir.
All right. This is a new farmer's market that will be located at 104th and Chalk Tal Road, so with that, I will move for its approval.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. And the item passes. Item F is an ordinance on final hearing also recommended for approval. It's PUD 1972 rezoning 10400 North Sarah Road from AA Agricultural to 1972 Planned Unit Development. Since I'm Ward one, I'm going to move for approval. We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. And the item passes. Item G, an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval. PUD 1973 rezoning 451 East Wilshire Road from R1 to PUD 936. Ward seven.
Yes, is the applicant present? Before you speak, I do want to reference a couple things. One, that quite, not too long ago, when this was first introduced, that the news had reported that this had been approved. So, I want to here today say, this is where it gets approved or denied. It was not when it was introduced. Also, there were some questions that came to me through that story about this particular school. So, maybe you can help me first if you'll introduce what this is, and then I'll have my questions after.
Yes, ma'am. Pervy Patel with Wallace Design Collective. The address is 410 Walnut. I am here representing the applicant, representatives of the school. Oklahoma City Public Schools are here as well. So, if there's any questions I can't answer, they may help answer. This is for an enterprise school at, off of Wilshire Boulevard. The site is about 65 acres. The proposal is to keep the development as close to Wilshire Boulevard and to the north of the site, which used to be Harrison Park, or was previously Harrison Park, would be a cross-country trail. The idea is to keep that as natural as possible and just put in some trails for training purposes. We did have a neighborhood meeting in September. Some of the concerns, well, the main concern that came out of that was traffic backing up onto Musgrave, which is the entrance into the neighborhood to the east. The school has planned to separate both bus drop-off as well as parent drop-off, and those plans were presented to the neighborhood. It's part of our PUD application as well, so all the traffic will be contained on the site. And that seemed to take care of the concerns that the neighborhood had. There were some existing drainage concerns they had, but those were existing, and we did ask them to talk to the city. On our site, we will follow all of Oklahoma City's codes as far as drainage is required. That's about the presentation that I have. If you have any specific questions?
Just one, and again, thank you for that, and you probably won't be able to answer this, or you may, I apologize. As far as this being an enterprise school, I would like for someone to define what that means and if that means that this will be an application school as far as enterprise is concerned.
Laura Holmes, Attorney for Oklahoma City Public Schools, 900 North Broadway. The enterprise school, this is Belle Isle Enterprise High School. As part of the Pathway for Greatness in 2019, the district determined to expand the number of application spots. There's already a Belle Isle Enterprise Middle School. An enterprise school is solely a creation, only ones that exist are in Oklahoma City Public Schools. They are solely a creation of policy. That was done prior to the law being approved in Oklahoma for charter schools. But this school, some of our current charter schools started as enterprise schools and became charter schools. Belle Isle continues to be managed an enterprise school. And so, this is actually operated by Oklahoma City Public Schools and not by a separate charter board. An enterprise school, in this particular case, is an application school.
Which is my grave concern, especially for this neighborhood, and the fact that we continue to close schools and now we're building new ones in existence. So, a couple, thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Do you have other questions relative to that?
I do not, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens.
So, I'll say this before we move this, move it forward. Harrison Park, I hate to see that go away, and I say that because I was one of those kids that attended the Eastside YMCA, and for recreation, we would go to Harrison Park and shoot archery. And I swear, I saw Bigfoot out there. So, I don't care what anybody says, he was in Oklahoma, in Oklahoma City, and that's where I saw him. But, for us to take away those opportunities for our residents to have and now create an application school, and I have a neighboring neighborhood where we've already seen this happen and take place before, where these application schools, the neighborhood, is usually omitted from being able to attend. And those are concerns for me when it comes to how we create these application schools, where they're placed, and how they're placed in our communities. We've seen it happen with Northeast High School, and now we're about to see it happen in the Musgrave community, which is a predominantly African-American and minority community. And it will be no longer that after this happens with this school. So, we can move this application forward, but I will not be supporting it.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. And the item passes five to two. Item H is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval. It's PUD 1974 rezoning 9002 Southwest 15th Street from R1 to PUD 1974. Ward three.
Has anybody signed up to speak?
No, ma'am.
I'll move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. And the item passes. Item I is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval. It's a rezoning of 8715 Broadway Extension from PUD 1491 to PUD 921. Ward two is, can we come back to that when he gets back? We'll hold off on item I. We're going to move to item J. It's an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval. PUD 1977 rezoning of 2501 South High Avenue. Ward four.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is another school that would be located at 25th and High. So, if no one signed up to speak, I'll move for its approval.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. And the item passes. We'll now go back to item I. This is an ordinance on final hearing of PUD 1975 rezoning 8715 Broadway Extension. Ward two.
Good morning. Happy New Year. Mark Zitzat with Johnson &amp; Associates. Address is 1E Sheridan Avenue. Before you, we think it's a pretty exciting redevelopment project of this tract of land south of the Life Church on Broadway Extension. The developer here is being very intentional on this project in terms of connection and sense of community back to the neighborhood. In an effort to do that, we're tying in two pedestrian connections to the existing public streets, as well as allowing the pond and the walking trails and the green space to be accessed by folks in the community. We did attempt to host a neighborhood meeting at KIP Academy to the south. We sent out over 500 public notices outside of the public notice that the city staff sent out. We did not have overwhelming success, but we did have a few residents show up. We did talk through the project with them. After the Planning Commission meeting, which this was approved unanimously, I met with Councilman Cooper. He asked that we resend out notice for this meeting as well as the other information about the project in both English and Spanish. So, we sent it out again to over 500 people, both English and Spanish translations. I don't know that anyone here has signed up. Our office did not receive any additional comments or questions, but with that, be happy to answer any questions you have.
Well, thanks for the Spanish outreach, just from knocking doors up there. I had a lot of residents I learned who are Spanish speakers and renters. Have you had a moment yet to chat with Traffic Commissioner Littlefield about, just the traffic calming, like on 85th, for instance?
Not to this point. There's still some work that has to be done, but we will connect with him. There will be future applications that have to go to the Traffic Commission in regard to 85th. I know KIP is planning some improvements and projects as well, which is going to impact the traffic flow of their two blocks. So, we'll be working with both the Traffic Commissioner and KIP when we get to the southern part of our project.
Well, and I also appreciate that you all are willing to kind of chat with us as an ongoing thing, because I can tell you, heading into the bond, this neighborhood has my full attention in terms of resurfacing and street lighting and traffic calming. And quite frankly, I'm curious to see what Live Free OKC's Violence Interruption Pilot Program is up to, because at some point, we're going to have to do something like this up here. This neighborhood really needs to be a priority for the city of OKC, because it just has not for a long, long time. And when I was knocking doors up there this last time, there are generations, generations plural, worth of residents who have lived through gang violence and shootings and have to make very difficult decisions about, do they want their children to continue to live in that neighborhood? And so, literally, parents will move their kids out. And, but they love the neighborhood, like two things are two at once. And so, I want to be there to help them love this neighborhood. So, I'm glad you all are going to be some new neighbors, and I'm excited about some of the conversations we've already had. And I would like updates. Once you start talking with Traffic Commissioner Littlefield, if that can be something the city can kind of update me about as well. I can tell you, there's another developer just south of here that's looking at, on Wilshire, the need for traffic lights at Hudson and Wilshire. Just talking about people speeding into the neighborhood or just speeding on Wilshire. So, it seems there's going to be a lot of attention we're going to have to do to do some repairing of the breach. So, but for now, good work, and I'm glad for your attention to the traffic and to the outreach, and I'll move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. And the item passes. Item K is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval. Res zoning 1603 North Classen Boulevard from R3 Medium Density Residential to Spud 1509. Ward six.
I will move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. And the item passes. Item L is an amendment to a master design statement. L1, excuse me, and L2 will be the ordinance on final hearing. Do we have to take individually, or?
Yes. Yeah, can we have the applicant come up and just talk about the amendment a little bit and the reason for it, and then we'll move forward.
Good morning. Mark Zitzat with Johnson &amp; Associates, 1E Sheridan Avenue. Before you, we think it's a pretty exciting project by Catholic Charities. Provide some lower-income housing as well as transitional housing on the site. We went to the Stockyards Transitional Urban Design District. There was a lot of questions just about the SPOD process, and so, we had about, I think it was an hour and a half meeting just on this item. Ultimately, they moved it forward without a recommendation of approval or denial. We went to Planning Commission. It's coming to you with the unanimous recommendation of approval. Post-Planing Commission, after meeting with Planning Director Jeff Butler and his staff, it became clear that we needed two amendments to this application to ensure that when we go back to the Urban Design Commission, we won't run into any issues. And so, those two changes have been resubmitted as an SPOD with a revision date of December 14th. That is in your packet, and I'll let you know what those two changes are. Section 10 under sidewalks were requiring that the internal sidewalks be connected out to Southwest 10th and Youngs, which is shown on the site plan. You can see the north-south connection to 10th, and then we have two sidewalk connections back to Youngs. And then, the other change was about building orientation. This was maybe the most significant discussion point at Planning Commission. This is set up to be cottage court-type of neighborhood, so all of the homes and units are going to face inward on each other and on a central courtyard. To our north is actually like an outdoor storage yard that's entirely fenced in. And then, to our east is Catholic Charities' other project that's ongoing and a parking lots across the street. So, in terms of urban design and facing outward toward the street, which is what we primarily would try to do, this particular block, we don't have residential immediately to our north or to our east. We also have industrial to our west. So, with that, those are the two changes that we resubmitted. Happy to answer any other questions you have.
I don't have any questions. I will move for approval for the amendment.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. And the amendment passes. Now, L2 is an ordinance on final hearing approving the rezoning of 1101 South Youngs Boulevard to R4 and I1 Light Industrial. Ward six.
I will move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. And the item passes. Item M is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval. Res zoning 4511 Madera Boulevard from O2 General Office and C3 Community Commercial Districts to Spud 1566. Ward four. No one has signed up.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is a senior independent living facility. It will be located at 44th and Madera, so it's recommended for approval, and with that, I will move for its approval.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. And the item passes. Item N is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval. Res zoning 501 West Memorial Road from Spud 824 Simplified Planned Unit to Spud 1567. Ward seven.
Yes, Mr. Box. I know this is not as complicated as it should be, but I think there, if I'm not mistaken, we were trying to fix something with this one?
Yeah, so this is David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. This is already zoned for auto sales, and this is going to be a new Cadillac, excuse me, Lincoln dealership. There was, the old PUD had a limitation on signs, so the only thing we're seeking to do here is to allow this monument sign. In terms of the height, it is consistent with what's along Memorial. However, we don't allow a pole sign. This is a monument sign. Everything else along Memorial is a pole sign. So, that's the only change here.
Okay, so I just wanted everyone to understand that. And, how can you confuse Lincoln with a Cadillac?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Get out of here!
I think there's a Cadillac dealership across the street.
Yeah, I think so, too. I'm just teasing you. All right, with that, I'll move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
And the item passes. Moving on to item O.
We'll stay up here. You got the next one.
He's got to get his steps in. So item O is a rezoning of 112 Northwest 15th from R4 to SPUD 1568.
Yeah, if you could just explain the project, since it is a pretty big change for this spot.
Sure. Once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. This is an SPOD that would allow townhome development. Because it is in the HL designation, we actually did have to go before the HP Commission. So at the HP Commission, there were a couple folks that were there, but once they heard what we were doing, they actually flipped from being against it to being in support of it. We did keep the HL designation within the SPUD, so CA's, before we could go build, we'd have to go back for approval of the actual design before HP Commission. So HP Commission, as well as Planning Commission, did provide recommendations for approval.
Well, and yeah, this is, we were just sort of remarking on very creative infill of meeting those sort of historic design standards, but providing a lot of density on a lot that's been empty, so I will move for approval.
We have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
And the item passes. Item P is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval. It's rezoning 7116 Memorial Parkway from PUD 198 to SPUD 1569, Ward 8.
Did anyone sign up to speak?
No, sir.
I'd move for approval at this time, please.
We have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. And the item passes. Item Q is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval, rezoning 1039 Northwest 63rd Street from C3 to SPUD 1570, Ward 2.
Hello?
But I can't remember where. Go ahead.
Yes, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. This is an application for Bank 7. So Bank 7 is currently located in what kind of feels like a 1990s strip center type of development. It's a prominent corner, right there at 63rd and Western. And so what Bank 7 is wanting to do is rebuild and put their corporate headquarters here, but make it more of an urban-style development, pulling it to that corner, pulling it to Western, to 63rd Street. Worked with staff pretty extensively on the language in the application. There are some issues on site that we're going to be able to clear up with some existing infrastructure. Ultimately, Planning Commission recommended approval. There was no protest, and happy to answer any questions.
Well, and thanks for sitting with me a few weeks ago. I'm encouraged to see people on their own, particularly in Ward 2, understand the need for development and redevelopment like this, right? Where it's alongside these pedestrian bits of infrastructure. So I just want to say kudos, credit where it's due. Who knew it'd be a bank? I do have a question. As I was driving over there the other day, grocery shopping, right up here at Avondale, you and I talked a little bit about sidewalk infrastructure. So the sidewalk that you all, it looks like, are going to construct, there's then utilities? Some sort of public utility just north of that sidewalk? Like, in other words, this doesn't quite connect to the property to the north of it? And I don't know. I know we need to. I don't know what we need to do about that or how to do it, but like, do you see where your sidewalk is, where the entrance and exit is up there north?
Yeah, what you have, it's a bit of an awkward intersection, because Avondale is a signalized intersection with one of the legs being within the city of Nichols Hills. So I believe what you're referring to is, you know, we're obviously building a sidewalk. When you get to our north property line, the pole for the traffic signal is actually squarely in the middle of where a sidewalk would be.
Again, I hate to just throw stuff on the old bond package, but I, you know, that's sort of the infrastructure when we have these sort of redevelopments like that. I know I'm not asking us to move the light pole, but, or the literal stoplight pole, but something's got to be constructed that continues that connectivity north.
I can look to see if we've got any projects that are planned there, or like you said, if we don't have anything planned there, we could review that to see if there's an opportunity in the future for a project.
Yes, and, you know, it might sound like a small thing. It's just that there are, in fact, other projects all around here that are happening from the 17 bond in terms of bike and pedestrian stuff. So ultimately, making sure Western is that more pedestrian-friendly, and Classen just to the east of it, there's stuff happening there. So I just want our attention to be a bit surgical when we're having these conversations. So, good job for you all. I guess we're going to have a little bit more work ahead of us, and so we'll just move for approval. And thank City Manager.
We have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
And the item passes. Item R is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval, rezoning 1615 Northwest 31st Street from R1 to SPUD 1571, Ward 2.
Is anyone here to speak on this item? They are. Ask and ye shall. So close, we'll get there.
Good afternoon, or good morning, Mark Grubbs, 1800 South Sarah Road, on behalf of the application. This is a SPUD to allow for the existing house and a garage with a loft apartment. The, we worked with staff and Planning Commission to ensure that balconies would only face south. This is located directly across the street from R4 and four blocks from the college, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, would ask for your approval. There was no protest at Planning Commission, and it was approved at Planning Commission.
Well, thanks for the context, and with that, I would move for approval.
We have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. And the item passes. Item S is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval, rezoning 4400 Southwestern Avenue from C3 to R1, Ward 4.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This basically is going to allow the utilization of existing parking lots. No one signed up to speak. I'll go ahead and move for its approval.
We have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. And the item passes. Item T is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval, rezoning 105 Northeast 85th Street from PUD 1584 to R1, Ward 7.
Yes, Mr. Zizat. And we've seen a lot of different applications for this part of our community, clearly, as we already saw on previously, but this one is something that has been developing already within this part of our community.
Yes, ma'am. Mark Zizat, Johnson and Associates. Address is Winnie Sheridan Avenue. This is part of the development known as the half. Immediately to our east, there's the four, five-story apartment complex that's been constructed. We're immediately south of the ponds. This PUD always envisioned that a hotel would be a part of the overall scheme. This project, then immediately to our west, will be restaurants that'll front the ponds, and that's about going to complete this portion of the half. Recently, you all saw an application to extend this development further south, and the project came in as the south half. So this project was for the hotel. The original PUD had language that was fairly specific in terms of height. It measured it from the top of the berm along Broadway Extension. The site slopes downward, and so what we ended up with was an allowance of about 130 feet in total height. The hotel, as it's being planned and designed to meet the room count on the tighter site, it's proposed to be just under 150 feet. So that's what we've requested. That's the only change in this document. Everything else matches the PUD. There were questions about visibility from the neighborhood. We're over 1,700 feet away from the portion that's zoned R1, and then, as you saw earlier, the vacant tract of land to the east is going to be that kind of open field track area for the school. But with that, happy to answer any other questions.
So 130 to 150 feet is how many floors for this hotel, are we assuming?
The hotels, right now, it's 10.
10. All right. Okay, I'll go ahead and move for approval of this application.
We have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. And the item passes. Item U is an ordinance on final hearing establishing reserved parking space for the physically disabled on the east side of South Dewey Avenue, Ward 6.
I'll move for approval.
We have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. The item passes. Item V is an ordinance on final hearing establishing a 45-degree angle parking with a setback parking on North Lottie, Ward 7.
Yes, this is in conjunction with what we heard earlier from Ms. Debbie Miller about the bike lane improvements for Lottie, so I will move for approval, and all of the following will precede that.
We have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. And it passes. Item W is establishing a 90-degree angle on Lottie.
I'll move for approval.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. And the item passes. Item X is an ordinance on final hearing removing all parking controls on both sides of North Lottie in conjunction with V and W's, Ward 7.
I'll move for approval.
We have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. Ward 2, thank you. And the item passes. Item Y is the public hearing regarding the Adventure District Business Improvement Districts. Y1, excuse me. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No, we don't.
Okay, so moving on to Y2 is a resolution adopting and confirming an assessment role. I'll take a motion. We have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. The item passes. Item Z is an ordinance on final hearing adopting and setting the assessment role, year 2324 for the Adventure District Business Improvements.
And before we move the vote forward, I just wanted to ensure that you all see our executive director for the Adventure District. I'm putting her on the spot, but this is Brittany Hunter. If you have not yet had the chance to meet with her about her ideas of moving and continuing to improve Adventure District, I hope that you will in this coming year, because she has some very bright ideas and ways that we can make Adventure District a true adventure. Not to say it's not, but just improving the adventure that we see in that area, and thank you for that.
Let me also say, as I drove to two different movies during the holiday season at Tinseltown, because it's my favorite theater, it was so cool seeing off of I-44 the construction for the new trail. I mean, it is something, and I'm just really just so excited about the idea of being able to bike from, you know, Paseo to Zack Taylor Park, and to be able to take that alongside that creek, and then to end up in the Adventure District. I mean, it really is a game changer that works. I can't wait to see more of your vision come to fruition, so.
Oh, you ain't seen nothing yet.
Thank you. So do we have a motion?
Yes.
We have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. And the item passes. Item AA is an ordinance to be introduced, and I believe we have a...
Yes, Debbie Miller, our interim Public Works Director, will present this ordinance.
Good morning, Debbie Miller, Public Works. The city participates in FEMA's Community Rating System. This is a program that we get rated on from 1 to 9. We're currently at 9. So one of the items in this change is to add, which we already do, where the mechanical equipment has to be one foot above the 100 years. So by putting this into our ordinance, we'll be able to go down to an 8, which will allow our citizens and residents to get 10% off on their flood insurance. The second item that is included in this is FEMA has updated the maps for Oklahoma County and for Cleveland County to March 27th, 2024, and we're required by FEMA to have those states in our ordinance, and so that's included in this also.
Thank you, Debbie. Appreciate that. So today's just the introduction?
That's right.
Okay. Do we still need to take, okay. So, I'll accept a motion. We have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. And it is introduced. Item AB is a public hearing regarding the ordinance and the name of the financial director to be changed. We have anybody who needs to ask questions or talk about this? Okay.
No one's signed up to speak.
No one? Okay. So with that, we'll move for approval.
No.
No? We don't have? Oh, it's just a public hearing. Gotcha, sorry. Okay. AC is the public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. AC1, excuse me.
Vice Mayor, I would like to defer item C for two weeks, please.
We can go ahead and vote on that deferral? We have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. And the item passes. Now we'll move to AC2 as a resolution declaring that the structures are dilapidated. We have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. And the item passes. AD1 is the public hearing regarding unsecured structures. City Manager? Do we have anything else other than what we presented earlier?
Nope.
And no one's signed up to speak.
Thank you. So we'll move to AD2, a resolution declaring structures are unsecured. We have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. And the item passes. AE1 is the public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Amy, has anyone signed up?
No, they haven't.
AE2 is the resolution to...
Vice Mayor, sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
I apologize. On item E, that is my item that I deferred for two weeks. If we can defer that one, please.
Got you.
Can we, before we defer that, can we see a picture of it? Just curious.
The reason I'm wanting to defer that is because I would like to talk to the homeowner of this property. I've already seen the pictures, and trust me, I understand what it looks like. It's bad. But I want to see, due to the location, if there's something that can be done as far as a property owner. as the property owner.
I was just curious. Thank you.
Yeah, it's bad.
So we'll vote now for the deferral. We have a motion and a second. Please cast your vote. The item passes. We now will go to AE2, a resolution declaring buildings are abandoned. Motion and a second. Please cast your votes. And the item passes. Item AF1 is the public hearing regarding the resolution amending the June 20, 2023 resolution approving certain fire listed in other sales tax expenditures.
So Chris York will present this item and let us know what's being amended in the fire sales tax resolution.
Thank you, City Manager. Just a couple of things being updated here. This is a proposed amendment for the fiscal year 2024, public safety sales tax, and it impacts two projects. One is for the Advanced Life Support Project. The fire department's requesting an increase of $300,000. This is for expenses related to additional firefighters taking EMT and paramedic training. And then also an increase to Exhibit G, which is our fire technology project. And this is going to be an increase of $200,000 requested for updates to the software systems and websites for the department. In total, we're looking at an increase requested of $500,000, and this will set a public hearing for the next council meeting, so we'll bring it back to you for consideration.
Thank you, Chris. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
So we vote to introduce.
On item two.
On item two. We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. And the item passes. Thank you. AG1 is a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority authorizing the firms of Collins, Zorn, and Wagner PC to represent city employees in the case of Sadi Long v. City of Oklahoma City. Executive session is not recommended.
I would like to make a motion to enter into executive session.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
City Manager?
Yes.
As this vote happens, I can't remember all the details on this one, but were we not going to have some sort of, what do you call it, like, update on how we could be moving forward in ways that this vote doesn't keep happening over and over again, this divisiveness? I could have swore there was a conversation that we all had about that.
I don't recall.
Well, I'll just.
I mean, I'm glad to visit with you about this further, but I don't recall that we had another discussion about that.
I, yes, we'll have to talk offline.
Okay.
I'll just say that.
Okay.
The item fails five to three for executive session. Now we'll vote on AG1. We have a motion and a second. Please cast your vote. And the item passes five to three. Item AH is a recommendation to enter into executive session on advice of the municipal council to receive confidential communications. We have a motion and a second. And the item passes, and we'll handle that at the conclusion of the other items. Item AI is claims are recommended for approval. We can take A through E with one vote. We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. And the item passes. Item 12, comments from council. Ward two.
I screened briefly with everybody. Our next council meeting won't take place until after the Martin Luther King holiday. And so I just wanted to bring to attention someone I've spoken about previously, but Bayard Rustin. He is the guy who was the right hand to Martin Luther King Jr. In fact, as you can see here from National Public Radio, not only was he the advisor to MLK Jr., he was the organizer behind 1963's March on Washington. And he's someone forgotten, as you can see here, because at the time, if 1963's the March on Washington, 1971, every state but Illinois, it was still illegal to be gay. In fact, the American Psychiatric Association, until that same time, considered it a mental illness. So the idea that this guy was going to be out in front of the movement, even though he is resp, I just can't stress this enough, he is responsible for getting the buses there that were going to bring residents from Selma, from Tennessee, from all across the country, the churches, the churches of different faiths and skin colors, ethnicities. That's what an organizer does, is they bring all these different people together. And so I mentioned going to some movies over the holiday season, and there's a new film called Rustin that I believe is available on Netflix right now that's about him. And I suspect you're going to see a lot more Oscar buzz surrounding him, the actor playing him. And, you know, this is someone I literally did not learn about until about 15 years ago. And I just think that's wild that you could have something as big as the March on Washington and have one of the organizers behind it be almost forgotten to history's dustbin. And so I'm just really, I think it's important for someone like me who is biracial and openly gay to build, to shine a light on people who've come before us. And I always wonder what it would have been like had I been in middle school and high school and had I learned about this guy at the same time I was learning about MLK and Rosa Parks, you know? What kind of extra boost of confidence would that have given me? So I want to be that person to give people that extra boost of confidence. And it doesn't matter whether you're gay or not. I just want you to know that sometimes there are moments in our society where people marginalize us, bully us, make fun of us, these sorts of things. But it turns out sometimes that can be your strength. So just wanted to say that. Speaking of strength, just wanted to say thanks to the council members who reached out. My mother is on the mend from her fall. She just got real excited to see her grandbaby, who was walking in the door during the holidays. And so when she fell, she went down on her wrist and fractured a bunch of stuff. But the good people at the hospital there in Midwest City were able to cast her up really, really well, to the point where, fingers crossed, she might not have to have surgery. So, yeah, I just really appreciate people who reached out. And I would also just say this, I think it's important to always, and it's tough, and I know we're in for a bumpy year, I think globally, but something I felt really good about at that ER that night with her is that I wasn't sitting there, you know, she was very scared, but I wasn't sitting there in like any kind of regret because we had just spent most of the last few weekends together, going to lunch and, of all things, watching the Friday the 13th franchise, which she hated as a child. But we had a lot of fun with that. And so I think it's about being grateful for what's in front of us and how do we move from desiring more and envying what other people have, but how do we actually find gratitude for the coffee in the morning, the, you know, the people in our lives? And so I think this experience has taught me that, and God help me, help me, I hope I take that into the rest of the year. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ward three? Ward four? Ward five?
I'd like to thank the DeBbys, Martin and Miller, and David Todd for attending my community forum with me. It was a good turnout. And I'd also like to thank the Boy Scouts in the back of the room, the only ones left here. As blindly entertaining as this was, this is how cities work, and thank you guys for paying attention and being here.
Thank you. Ward seven, six, excuse me. Ward seven?
Yes, to echo that, you got lucky because usually we're here a little longer, so you guys still get to eat breakfast this morning. I just want to say first, Happy New Year, Happy Quanta. And also to, I was actually going to reiterate what's going to be happening before our meeting, so I'm glad Councilperson Cooper was able to begin that conversation. Please don't forget about all of the things that will be happening to commemorate the legacy of Dr. King. The theme this year is Together We Rise, One Nation We Dream. And if you did not know, it's on their website, OKCMLKalliance.org. All of the events, as far as from Saturday to Monday, are listed. But this is the third largest MLK Day Parade, according to this website, in the United States. So that means we have the privilege of hosting a very large commemoration for Dr. King, one of the largest in the nations. And I would continue to say, I think it's, we're pretty special because we were one of the places that hosted Dr. King when he was young, although we turned him away to be a pastor at Calvary Baptist Church, he still came. And then his father commemorated the first Martin Luther King Jr. program after his passing in that next year in Oklahoma City, and that's still going strong. So the 13th, there will be a Gospel Extravaganza. The 14th, there is that program at St. John Missionary Baptist Church. At 3:00 and at 6:00 on that same evening on the 14th, there's the OKC Branch NAACP Cross-Cultural Dinner and Program at Temple Benet Israel, and that is one of the most exciting pieces, in my opinion, of the events, to be able to have that type of cross-cultural conversation and especially with the things that are happening right now within our world globally. And also for the Monday, that breakfast will be happening as well as a job there. And of course, we will have the parade. It's going to begin at 2:00, bell ringing. All of those things will still happen. Volunteers are still needed. We are 11 days away, and sponsors are still needed as well. So I hope you will consider being a part of volunteering because it takes, it takes us. And actually, on January 15th, it's actually a day on. It is commemorated as a day of service. So if you have time to volunteer, please volunteer your time. Looking forward to seeing everyone in 11 days, 7 hours, 8 minutes, and 51 seconds, according to their website.
Thank you. Ward eight?
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to thank Steve Lackmire. I don't know if everybody saw it, but last Friday, he wrote a great article on the health and stable, stability of our, and growth of our economy in Oklahoma City. Wages are up 5.8% over the prior year. And unemployment is down to less than 3%. Retail sales have rebounded, and I understand we have some concerns about that, but it's rebounded since the pandemic. Housing is affordable compared to most of the country. In fact, Forbes Magazine named Oklahoma City the second-best place to buy a home. And also, our median age in Oklahoma City keeps going down. And the great thing about that is, even though I'm older, it means our youth people are staying here, and there are jobs for them here, and they're not moving to other cities. And so I think once in a while, we ought to take a look at what we're doing as far as having a healthy economy. I'd encourage everybody to read the article. It's really, it really speaks well of Oklahoma City. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes comments from council. Now, item 13, citizens to be heard. Von Oslin. Okay? So that concludes citizens to be heard. We will now move into executive session for item AH. We will now move into executive session for item AH. Okay, we are back, and we are at item 14, adjournment. Thank you.